I'd like to call to order the Battle Creek City Commission meeting for September 2nd, 2025. It is 7:00 PM. We, if you are able, I would ask you to rise for the invocation. We will have a moment of silence, and then I'd like to call on Commissioner Reynolds to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kotarski-Smith.
Here.
Commissioner LaCoss.
Present.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Sophia.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Sophia. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Mayor Mark Benke and Commissioner Jim Lance are not available.
They are traveling.
Yes.
The next order on our agenda is Proclamations and Awards, and we have a proclamation tonight for National Big Brothers Big Sisters Month for 2025. Do we have someone here to...? Oh, we do. You'll meet me down front? So I'm not going to take the time to read the proclamation tonight, but I would like to turn it over to one or both of you to talk about some of what is happening for Big Brothers Big Sisters Month.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Andrews. I am not just an employee for Big Brothers Big Sisters, but I also volunteer as a big. So we do have a lot coming up this month. We have our Paint the Town Green, which is just a whole week, just to kind of raise awareness of our program, hopefully get more bigs to help volunteer with our littles. We're doing some match activities, so some of our bigs and littles that are currently matched can go make pizza, decorate cupcakes. So we're really excited, so you should see green out a lot, but we're just really hoping to get more bigs. So if you'd like to sign up, or you know anyone that would like to sign up, it is a great program, and I've seen firsthand the impact that it's had on our community, so I'm very grateful.
So if someone is interested in signing up, how do they do that?
Glad you asked. So, many different ways. You can find our social media, or our website is thinkbigtoday.org. Our application is on there. There's also some information if you have questions or are having a hard time with it. There is contact information, so you can reach out to someone, and they're able to help you through any part of it.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
I don't think so. I think you covered it. Yeah.
All right. The Chair will note any added or deleted resolutions.
There were none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Petitions, communications, and reports?
There were none.
All right. This brings us to our public hearing portion of the agenda. If you would like to make public comment on the subjects of these public hearings, please raise your hand and wait for me to acknowledge you, and then come forward to the podium where you will have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address before making your comment. I'd like to declare this public hearing open on the Oprah Jackson Bean.
This is a public hearing to receive public comment on an obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah exemption certificate application for Jackson Bean Management LLC at 99 West Michigan Avenue, located in Oprah District Number 20 for the city of Battle Creek.
The public hearing is open. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam Clerk, the next public hearing on the Oprah Protec.
This is a public hearing to receive public comment on an obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah exemption certificate application for Protec Panel and Trust Manufacturing LLC at 370 Watkins Road, located in Oprah District Number 21 for the city of Battle Creek.
I declare this public hearing open. Is anyone like, would anyone like to make public comment? Anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the LDDA. Madam Clerk?
This is a public hearing to receive public comment for the purpose of considering an amendment to the Tax Increment Finance Development Plan for the city of Battle Creek Lakeview Downtown Development Authority.
Declare this public hearing open. Does anyone wish to make public comment? Joe?
Just, Joe Harris, Battle Creek. Just going to be as fast as possible. People need to understand that what this plan proposes is that there's going to be a 35% capture of property taxes from Battle Creek City residents, Callan County as a whole, KCC, and 100% of the tax. Now, what this means is that you're going to have 35% less resources to work with in those specific areas. Over a 35-year plan, that 35-year property taxes capture equates to over 30, or $46 million. That's $46 million that could be used for a lot of other things. I just want to put this in perspective. It's a lot of money that's going to be taken away from the city of Battle Creek. This is all based on projection. There's no certainty in any of this. We can project all we want. We can say that this is going to happen, that's going to happen, but nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow. I think that 35% capture is way too much. Honestly, I think it should be zero. They should be able to stand on their own merits, as far as I'm concerned. This 35% capture is going to be done at residents' expense, quite possibly in the form of higher property taxes, increased school millages, and the like. And I understand the vision. I get it. Why can't we apply for grants that would help out for private investors? 35% is a lot of money to divert from other things, such as the police, the fire, water department, roads, and the like. Now, if the city of Battle Creek can afford to allow a 35% capture from property taxes to the Lakeview Downtown Development Authority, then why can't it divert 35% of property taxes so as to ensure that our fire, our police stations are updated as well? Also, having our roads fixed. Those are just some thoughts, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing no further public comment, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any remaining agenda items. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda item, please raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You will have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments, and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. Any public comment? Reese?
Good evening. Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. I'll be speaking on Resolution 233 and 234. One of them is for an emergency repair of full blast roof, not to exceed 142,800. The other one is to do permanent repair, and then that to exceed amount of 104,500. I don't understand why we're spending money twice on fixing something on a roof or even redoing a roof. It's the same company that's doing both of them, so why can't we just go through with one amount of money, with one ability of them going up there and fixing the thing all at one time, instead of saying, okay, well, we're going to give you 104,000 to go up and fix it a little bit, and then come back and spend another 142,000 to redo the whole roof when we can get it all done at one time? I think that's a little bit a waste of money. The other one would be that I'm going to talk about is on 236, the authorizing city manager into the agreement for employment of Amanda for city manager. I wholeheartedly support that, and I think she will do an awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments? Joe?
Resolutions number 227, 228. I waited because these two are related to each other, because they both have something involved with them called tax abatements. Overall, I'm against tax abatements, and I believe that they're undue burden on Battle Creek City residents taxpayer. These abatements are based on projections of which could change at any time during the abatement period. In researching, I found the following information I just want to share. While tax abatements are good, or intended to stimulate economic development, the claim that they're not good for city taxpayers is supported by a lot of evidence, and there's a couple of concerns in regard to these abatements. First of all is revenue loss and cuts to services. When the city grants a business or a developer a tax abatement, it foregoes potential tax revenue. A Good Jobs First report found that from 2017 to 2022, 50 states lost over $93 billion in revenue due to corporate tax abatements. Now, I know we're talking about developers, but they fall in the same category. School districts lost the most amount in that whole thing. Public schools, which rely heavily on property taxes, often suffer the most from these funding shortfalls. Maybe that's why we are continually having schools that are asking for millage rates. Just a thought on that. Another concern is unequal distribution of the tax burden. Tax abatements can shift the tax burden onto residential homeowners and smaller businesses that do not receive the same breaks. Existing property owners may pay more to make up for the reduced tax contribution of subsidized corporations. And I'm just going to say something on a personal note. Thinking about the next month, I'm making about $8,000 of improvements to my house, and I am not going to be able to get a tax abatement, and I'm a resident. Isn't that something? These incentives can worsen income equality by primarily benefiting high-value properties and large corporations. Another concern is risk of misuse and inefficiency. Studies have shown that tax incentives are not a primary factor in the location decisions of most companies or developers, which instead prioritize factors like workforce, quality, and transportation costs. Critics argue that tax breaks are often windfall benefits for companies that would have invested anyway without them. Some projects receiving tax abatements simply displace jobs from other local businesses rather than creating new ones. The last concern is competition. Let me explain that. Tax abatements can create intense competition between cities and states as they try to outbid each other to attract businesses or developers. This dynamic, this dynamic drives down tax revenues across the entire region, undermining fiscal sustainability for all communities involved. The businessers and developers can exploit this competition by threatening to move to, to extract to more generous tax breaks. If they want more generous tax breaks, they'll threaten to move somewhere else. So the bottom line is this. Businesses and developers should be able to stand on their own merits without burdening the Battle Creek City taxpayers. I'm not against development, but I'm against development at the expense of Battle Creek City residents, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments? Autumn?
Good evening. I am also speaking on the ones about the tax abatement. I am here as a concerned taxpayer and community member to speak out against proposed tax abatements for large corporations and developments in the city. These so-called incentives might sound like a path to growth, but in reality, they're a handout that burdens everyday people and further lines the pockets of the wealthy. Let me explain why we should reject them outright. First, tax abatements rob our public coffers of desperately needed revenue. When we forgive millions in taxes for big businesses, who picks up the slack? We do. Through higher property taxes, reduced services, or crumbling infrastructure. Just look at data from cities like Detroit or Kansas City. Billions in abatements over decades, yet schools are underfunded, roads are pothole-ridden, and essential services like libraries and parks suffer. Why should we subsidize profitable corporations when our own neighbors are starving for investment? Secondly, these deals rarely deliver the promised jobs or the economic boom. Studies show that many abated projects would have happened anyways. Companies just game the system for free money, and the jobs that do they create? Often low-wage, temporary, or outsourced. Meanwhile, small local businesses, the true backbone of our economy, get no such breaks and the struggle to compete. It's corporate welfare at its worst, favoring outsiders over homegrown entrepreneurs who actually reinvest in our community. Third, tax abatements exacerbate inequality, widening the gap between the rich and the rest of us. Wealthy developers build luxury condos with our tax dollars forgiven, driving up rents and displacing longtime residents. In a time when housing affordability is in a crisis, how can we justify giving breaks to those who profit from gentrification? This isn't progress. It's a transfer of wealth from the middle class to the elite. Let's demand better. Instead of abatements, invest in sustainable development, workforce training, infrastructure, support local startups, hold corporations accountable, and make them pay their fair share, and use that money for real community benefits. Also, I would invite you all to read Article 9, Section 18 of the Michigan Constitution. The giving, even in the form of an abatement, is corporate welfare, and that's a violation of Article 9, Section 18 of the Michigan Constitution. So technically, when you guys are doing this, you're breaking the law and you're violating your oath of office. There's been a lot of hearings. I've testified up on them, up in Lansing, about these very issues, so I really, really consider you guys look into this, because you guys all took an oath not to violate the Constitution and to follow it, and this directly would fly in the face of the oath that you took. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comments? John?
John Kenevick, 234 South Avenue, Resolutions 233 and 234, which have to do with the full blast repair on the roofs. The total cost of both resolutions is $247,300. I have read both of these resolutions very carefully in the backup materials, and like all of the ones that tend to be put in front of us, they're all tainted because of the information that you need to have to make an informed decision is missing. You don't have backup information to see if Full Blast is making money or not making money. You need to see the finances of that per year. You need to look at the expenses of what goes into this that you've approved in the past. Let me give you a couple of examples of expenses. When Full Blast was originally brought to life and was going to come online, it was sued by another municipality because you called it Full Tilt. You had to pay from the taxpayer dollars $40,000 to the other amusement park that called themselves Full Tilt, and you changed it to Full Blast. That's $40,000 out of the taxpayer dollars. Now, let's talk about another issue. A number of years ago, an approved by a resolution, approved by the City Commission back then, was to purchase for $45,000 a miniature golf course to be put in at Full Blast. Two people stood up in front of here, in front of you, that had miniature golf courses not paid for by the taxpayer. They had a complaint that they couldn't compete with the one that you buy and put in there. You're having an effect on their customers. One of those Full Blast, excuse me, excuse me, one of those miniature golf courses, which was over by Myers on Columbia Avenue, is no longer there. It went out of business. What happened to the $45,000 miniature golf course that was put over in Full Blast? It was given away to a nonprofit. Another $45,000 thrown down the drain. In September 5th, 2023, you spent $103,000-plus for the chlorinator for the pool system. I would be looking at all the repairs since that whole thing started, and how much it's cost the taxpayers to bail them out. If they're not willing to make money and be self-sufficient, they have no business being there in the first place. You should turn both these resolutions down, because all you're doing is funding a failure at the taxpayer expense continually. Doesn't make much sense to be failing to pay for a failure unless you're a failure yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there additional public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to introduction of ordinances. Ordinance 08-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section 17 of Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes to Sophia Square.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 08-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 08-2025. Are there any commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 08-2025 has been introduced. Next item on our agenda is Ordinance 09-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section 18 of Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes regarding Hamlin Oprah House.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 09-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 09-2025. Are there any commission comments, questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 09-2025 has been introduced. Next item on our agenda is Ordinance 10-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to repeal Section 24 of Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, which granted a payment in lieu of taxes to Manchester Place.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 10-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 10-2025. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 10-2025 has been introduced. Next item on our agenda is Introduction of Ordinance 11-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to add Section 25 to Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the benefit crossing development.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 11-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 11-2025. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 11-2025 has been introduced. Next item on our agenda is, is Introduction of Ordinance 11-2025. Madam Clerk?
This proposed ordinance seeks to add Section 25 to Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the Bennett Crossing Development.
We want 1225?
Yes. Did I not say 12? Sorry.
This proposed ordinance seeks to add Section 26 to Chapter 882 Real Estate Taxation, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the- authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot for the Liberty Commons Apartments and Town Homes Project.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 12-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 12-2025. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 12-2025 has been introduced. Next item on our agenda is Introduction of Ordinance 13-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to amend Section 220.08, renaming streets of Chapter 220 Administration Generally, by updating names of organizations and titles of staff required to review an application for renaming a street, adding names of the heritage streets, and preventing their renaming, and repealing Section 220.09, Commemorative Designation.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 13-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 13-2025. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 13-2025 has been introduced. The final ordinance for introduction tonight is 14-2025. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This proposed ordinance seeks to rezone five properties bounded between Main Street, Bartlett Street, and Willis Street from their current zoning classification of T-3 Neighborhood Commercial District to a T4 Downtown Commercial District due to the existing character and uses in the area, and in order to prepare the property for potential future development pursuant to Section 1281.01 of the zoning code. Said parcels include the following: 120 Main Street, parcel number 8040-00-107-0; 37 Bartlett Street, parcel number 8040-00-085-0; 33 Bartlett Street, parcel number 8040-00-086-0; 29 Bartlett Street, parcel number 8040-00-087-0; and 112 Main Street, parcel number 8040-00-104-0.
I move for the introduction of Ordinance 14-2025.
Support. It's been moved and supported to introduce Ordinance 14-2025. Are there any commission comments or questions? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the planning department getting all this done, so it kind of fits in the area. It's kind of like a little donut hole of zoning there, so it's all the same area in that corner of the city. So thank you again for your help.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Ordinance 14-2025 has been introduced. We'll move on to commission comment regarding mating business.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Are there any commission comments or questions?
I'm not really sure why it's not going up there, but it was a unanimous vote.
The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda would be Resolution 227. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution approves an obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah exemption certificate on behalf of Jackson Bean Management, LLC, for real property located at 99 West Michigan Avenue, Battle Creek, Michigan, in Oprah District Number 20, and having an estimated cost of $3,824,700.
Move to approve Resolution 227.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 227. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 227 has been approved. Next on our agenda is Resolution 228. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution approves an obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah exemption certificate on behalf of Protech Panel &amp; Trust Manufacturing, LLC, for real property located at 370 Watkins Road, Battle Creek, Michigan, in Oprah Number 21, and having an estimated cost of $500,000.
Move to approve Resolution 228.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 228. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 228 has been approved. Next item is Resolution 229. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
A resolution approving a polling location at St. Thomas Episcopal Church at 16 East Van Buren Street.
Move to approve Resolution 229.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 229. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 229 has been approved. Next item is Resolution 230. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the city manager to renew various fully-insured Medicare Advantage healthcare plans with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan and Blue Care Network and related administrative services contract for the planned year January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2026, with an estimated renewal premium for the three plans combined at roughly $1,248,630.
Move to approve Resolution 230.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 230. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 230 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 231. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
A resolution approving the employee contribution rate for Division 15, commission-appointed, of the city's defined benefit pension plan with the municipal employees' retirement system to be increased to 10% from its current rate of 5%.
Move to approve Resolution 231.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 231. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 231 has been approved. Next item is Resolution 232. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes payment in the not-to... Oh, wrong one. This resolution, if approved, accepts the lowest responsive responsible bid for salt storage facility project from Miller Davis Company in an estimated amount of $2,460,050 with unit prices prevailing.
Move to approve Resolution 232.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 232. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 232 has been adopted. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 233. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes payment in the not-to-exceed amount of $142,800 to Diversified Roofing Solutions, LLC, for emergency repair of Full Blast roof.
Move to approve Resolution 233.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 233. Are there any commission comments or questions? Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to get clarification. From my understanding, when they were removing those solar panels, there was a lot of area beneath those panels that were showing damage for years with leaking, and I guess they were just in there, and after the emergency, it seemed advantageous for them to continue on with that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you're right. As the commission is familiar with this particular portion of the building, there has been some solar arrays in there from, I'm going to say, probably vintage 2008 or 2000... No, a little more recent than that, I believe. Maybe 2012, 2013, they were originally installed. And during the process of removing those solar arrays, yes, we determined that there are discovered that there was significant roof damage underneath them, particularly where they connected to the roof system, and so we needed to conduct some emergency repairs. And just to clarify the difference between this resolution and the next one, the first one is for the emergency repairs, which are already underway, partially complete and still underway, and the second resolution deals with the coating that will provide warranty for the roof, but this is the result of removing the arrays, discovering some roof damage, and then repairing that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other... Commissioner O'Donnell?
Oh, thank you. Thanks, city manager, for answering the question about why they're two different ones, because it's two different projects. It happened, unfortunately, that the roof was damaged during regular construction, so thanks for the clarification.
Any other commission comments, questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 233 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 234. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the city manager to execute a contract with the Diversified Roofing Solutions, LLC, of $104,500 for permanent repair of Full Blast roof.
Move to approve Resolution 234.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 234. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 234 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 235. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes city participation in the secondary manufacture national opioid settlement.
Move to approve Resolution 235.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 235. Are there any commission comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 235 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 236. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution, if approved, authorizes the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Amanda E. Zimmerlin for the position of city manager.
Move to approve Resolution 236.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve Resolution 236. Are there any commission comments or questions? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Vice Mayor, would you acknowledge our guests that we have here this evening?
Well, we have in the audience with us Amanda E. Zimmerlin, who came to Battle Creek this weekend to get a feel for what her new home will be like. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lacoste?
I just wanted to say I'm very thankful that we're done with this process. It's a very long, long-going thing, and I wanted to say thank you to the fellow commissioners for, I think, everyone worked really, really good together to come to this decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree with that.
I will say that the City Manager Evaluation Committee met last week with the city attorney. We reviewed the provisions in the contract, and we would recommend approval of this resolution. Any other comment? Seeing none, would you please vote? Resolution 236 has been approved. Amanda, welcome aboard. We will move on to general public comment. If you might like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the City Commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for me to acknowledge you, and then come forward to the podium. You will have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comment. Mary.
Hi.
Hi.
Mary Fields, and I live at 89 Laisro, and congratulations on your new job. You'll do a wonderful job. We're so happy. But I had the clerk pass out this list of lots, and I wanted to talk to you about your lots that could be sold and developed. And I kind of evaluated your inventory and kind of compared it to the land bank. You both had 450 lots in the city. And your lots, you actually have a pretty functional inventory. I was impressed. There's parks, there's homes, HOP program, Housing Commission. Somebody actually did a pretty decent job at some point. I know they don't work here now, but they did, and we kind of should finish it up. And what I think would be really good idea is everybody started becoming aware of the property you own. You own at least 90. You pay taxes to yourself, which is just silly. Do you even know how much you spend a year to own these? Is it really smart government, or is it kind of stupid government? I just think we need a more active way to sell these, like a list here at City Hall, downstairs at the information desk, get the planning. You guys should have a list. Should be on the website, maybe in the newspaper once a month. I'd like the mayor to walk around and present these properties to groups like developers and realtors, get some input. We could focus, we could sell these over the next 12 months. I realize you guys all have other jobs and you're busy, but you can still add this. Your list didn't include this one, because I had a senior moment and forgot to make copies. Sorry. So this is stuff you could sell and build on, and this would be stuff you couldn't. If you want a copy of this, get ahold of me, and I'll be happy to give it to you. But I just think we could be much more active, aggressive, not aggressive, but well, aggressive. I mean, intelligent. Let's, you know, if we focus, we could have this, not be a burden. It's just not intelligent government. So, I mean, we do a good job. We have a lot of nice parks. Our Housing Commission's a good organization, you know, but we can do better, because we have to pay for $28 million worth of fire stations. So, talk to you later. Thanks.
Thank you for your...
And come to our book sale.
Thank you for your comments. Joe? And then Autumn.
Joe Harris, Battle Creek. I totally was not even going to go this way tonight, but I have to, because everything was so obvious. I got to read this from the Open Meetings handbook. It says, "All decisions must be made at a public meeting open to the public. The OMA provides that all decisions of a public body shall be made at a meeting open to the public, and that with limited exceptions, all deliberations of a public body constituting the quorum of its members shall take place at a meeting open to the public." The OMA defines "decision to mean a determination, action, vote, or disposition upon a motion, proposal, recommendation, resolution, order, ordinance, bill, or measure on which a vote by members of a public body is required by which a public body effectuates or formulates public policy." Ugh, sorry. Who moves and supports the decision to move a resolution forward is a decision. According to the Open Meetings Act, all decisions must be made in public, not predetermined, such as who moves and who supports the resolution. Who moves for a resolution and who supports a resolution? When I was looking at it tonight, and from the research I've done, it's scripted. It just is. It was really obvious today. I could not help myself but say something. Here's how I know it's scripted. I've seen emails... I've seen emails from the City Manager in which I read the script of who was to move and who was to support a resolution. I read it. In addition, I've talked to a former City Commissioner, not gonna say who. They admitted to the same thing. I honestly believe that the scripts that are being emailed of who moves and who supports a resolution is a violation of an Open Meetings Act, based upon the fact that all, not some, all decisions need to be made in a public body, all. I understand why it's being done. I know that it moves the meeting along quickly. I get it. I got it. But honestly, it needs to stop, because I think it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I'm pretty sure it is, from what I can tell and from what I've read. I know there might be some, oh, different viewpoints on that. But decision means decision. Who decides and who supports is a decision that needs to be made in a public body, not predetermined before the meeting happens. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
Good evening. My name's Autumn Smith, and I'd like to take a moment to publicly welcome Ms. Zimmerlin as the new City Manager of Battle Creek. Ms. Zimmerlin, I sincerely hope your tenure here marks the beginning of a new chapter, one of transparency, accountability, and meaningful change. Our city is in desperate need of leadership that not only says the right things, but does the right things, especially when it's hard, inconvenient, or politically risky. But let me be absolutely clear. You are not stepping into an ordinary leadership role. You are stepping into a city where public trust has eroded, a city where whispers of corruption have long become loud echoes. Battle Creek has, for too long, been a place where misconduct is ignored, where accountability is avoided, and where the people are left wondering who is actually working for them. You publicly stated at the meet and greet, to myself and to the public that was there, that if you were managing a city or a police department under FBI investigation, you would fully cooperate with that investigation. Well, Ms. Zimmerlin, welcome to that reality. The Battle Creek Police Department in the city is under federal scrutiny. This is not speculation, this is fact. So, I'm here today to remind you of your own words and to tell you respectfully, but firmly, we will hold you to them. Be prepared to cooperate fully, because you are entering a swamp of lies, deceit, fraud, abuse, and in some cases, what may very well amount to criminal activity. You have a duty, not just to the Charter, not just to the Commission, but to the people of this city, to ensure that you are not another cog in a broken system. The people of Battle Creek are watching. Many of us are done being quiet. And while we welcome you with an open mind, we do so with clear eyes and high expectations. We don't need more press releases, we need action. We don't need more promises, we need integrity. We don't need another manager who turns their back when it matters most. Ms. Zimmerlin, your job starts now. Show us you meant what you said. The truth is long overdue in this city. And if you are here to lead, then lead us into truth and not away from it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lindsey Wheeler.
Lindsey Wheeler, 218 Leland Drive South. Good evening. The city of Battle Creek belongs to the Welcome Michigan Program. Many of you are here and don't know about it, but the city is still. And the news is filled with businesses losing their immigrant workers. Immigration, both legal and illegal, is ethnic dilution, which is a form of soft genocide. I'm an Anglo-Saxon by adoption. My people built this country, came over on the Mayflower and built this country up. America is Anglo-Saxon. No Anglo-Saxon, no America. Immigration, as Martin Crevel, an Israeli professor, said, is a form of warfare. It's warfare by demography. That's why Texas became American, is because Europeans flooded that and then took it over. The same thing is happening now in America. And businesses, in order to make money, are going to say, "Well, we need more immigration. We need immigration workers." And that is taking filthy lucre to genocide. I carry with me the Bible. The Bible condemns the Tower of Babel. It condemns race mixing throughout. St. Samson was called by God, and he destroyed the multiculturalism between the Philistines and the Israelites. God doesn't broke. God is the God of order, to maintain order. And part of that is a nation. Nation comes from the Latin word natus, meaning one birth. The Latins, the Romans, applied that to groups that are homogeneous. Only something that is homogeneous is a nation. To break that up is ethnic dilution, which is soft genocide. And the genocide in this country needs to stop. And I know the city of Battle Creek is engaged in genocide. And that's criminal activity. And it's also an act of treason against the Anglo-Saxon. Treason from within. And that's a high crime. The two highest crimes a man can commit is blasphemy and treason. And almost everybody in Battle Creek has committed the act of treason. And it's disgusting, and it's totally evil. We need to maintain the order and the ethnic majority and heritage peoples of America. Thank you very much.
I saw a hand up over here. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Swartz. I am here, I just wanna introduce myself to you all. I am running for Congress here in the 4th Congressional District. I live in Kalamazoo, and I am an attorney there. I focused most of my career on veterans and education law. So, I have a long career of public service, and I wanna continue that service to our country in the US Congress. I went to Michigan State, born and raised in West Michigan, and I'm a mom. I think it's really important that we get people in Congress who know what it's like to have to juggle 47 different things between my job and running for Congress and getting my daughter to swim practice and everything else, so that they can really, when they're writing the laws, understand what the impacts are of those laws. I've also worked two jobs after law school in order to be able to pay down my student loans and my mortgage and my car payment, all at the same time. And these are life experiences that are very, very necessary, I think, for people who want to lead us. So, like I said, I was just here to introduce myself. I ran last time again, or I'm back in it again. I'm looking forward to the fight, and I look forward to working with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Warner, and I'm here on behalf of Representative Steve Frisbee. And I just wanted to give a quick update about what the representative has been working on in Battle Creek, as well as Lansing, for you. So, he's been busy in Battle Creek lately. He held two Veterans Town Halls. He attended one, and then he held the other one. And those went very well. He also recently worked to help build a home with Habitat for Humanity, along with Commissioner Paige Carchey-Smith. And that went very well. And he also handed out backpacks and school materials recently at Ann J. Kellogg School. And that was also a great turnout, and he had a great time doing that as well. And he has also been busy in Lansing. You probably saw that the House did pass their budget last week. So, we expect to see some negotiations still between the House and Senate until we get, before we get a finalized budget. But they're working on that right now. And yeah, please feel free, as always, to reach out to Representative Frisbee's office, call or email at any time. He'd love to hear your concerns and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes.
Good evening. My name's Simon Lowenstein. I work with a company called Spire Development. We're the development company behind Bennett Crossing that's requesting a pilot. And I just wanted to make an introduction and tell you a little bit about Spire, since we're new to Battle Creek. Spire is a top 50 affordable housing developer in the US. We work in Ohio, Michigan, Kentucky, West Virginia, Arizona, and New Mexico. And in terms of the project that we're proposing, Bennett Crossing, it's a 47-unit, 100% affordable workforce housing development that will be built to lead zero energy standards. And the site for that development is on vacant land bank-owned property that will, we will remediate and return to productivity. We were specifically on the agenda for the pilot, but, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that, you know, going into the future. But I really just wanted to make the introduction and say hi, put a face to the name, you know, and just say that, you know, we really see the need for affordable housing in Battle Creek, especially workforce housing, especially with, you know, the Blue Oval Manufacturing Plant going in just down the road. And, you know, we're excited to potentially be in Battle Creek and, you know, look forward to what this project could bring. So, you know, I'll leave it there. Don't wanna waste any more of your time. Just wanted to say hi, guests.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? John?
John Kennevick, 234 South Avenue. I'm doing what's called a housekeeping issue. On July 15th, unfortunately, I was not in attendance here. I intended to speak on a certain matter, but since I wasn't here, I didn't speak on that. So, I'm gonna do it now. I'm gonna talk about the resolution that was passed on July 15th that allowed and approved by the City Commission to have Neighborhood Incorporated not pay back their $200,000 loan that they had made to the city of Battle Creek. Now, they had taken the loan out 25 years earlier and paid nothing. As I'd said before, when I got up here, I look up the backup information. So, let me give you a little bit of backup information. From 2011, the year 2011, to 2023, Neighborhoods Incorporated took in more than $24 million. But they weren't very competent, because by the time they were finally done for those same 13-year period, they were almost $3 million in the negative after spending that $24 million. They were $27 million in the negative. So, they weren't very good, very profitable. However, I do remember in 2001, 2002, 2003, and beyond that, that this Commission used to give them, by the City Commission, $200,000 gift every year to Neighborhoods Incorporated. You eventually brought and cut that down to $100,000, and then eventually you stopped that some years later. They have no reason for not paying up the $200,000 that you originally gave to them, because they could've paid it off with tax dollars that they had already been given to you in the past. So, that was into consideration of what they did. They are not a competent organization. But also, what brought to my attention is you do not bring up backup information telling the finances of Neighborhoods Incorporated so that you might make an informed decision. The decision is always made up where you keep seeing approved, 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 approved. One thinks that after a while, if you flip a coin and it comes up 10, 10,000 times, you've got a two-headed coin. And that's pretty much what this Commission is about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments? Reese?
Good evening, Reese Atkins, 84 South, 23rd Street. I was not going to come up here until the young man just came up here on affordable housing and got my curiosity going, because here, a couple of months ago, we approved, I do believe it was $500,000, for a committee to come in and do some research on what affordable housing actually is. And we were supposed to have been told what that committee came up with, and we've heard nothing. So, there's money being spent on affordable housing, but do we even know what affordable housing actually is? Because I've seen nothing on what this committee has said that affordable housing actually is inside the city of Battle Creek, because far as I'm concerned, there is no such thing as affordable housing. Because you can say one person can afford it, to where then another person cannot afford it, and they're put out on the street because they cannot afford it. So, before we start spending on affordable housing, let's spit out what a definition is of affordable housing, because it's not what everybody thinks affordable housing is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments? Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Assistant Mayor. Kathy Antea, Park Ridge, Battle Creek. I'm here to tell you, or talk about three things in my three minutes, 2 minutes and 47 seconds. The first is to remind everyone that on November 6th, the Share Center is having our first annual fundraiser, Share for Share. Our Commissioner did mention it at two meetings, the last meeting, regarding the date. We're just finalizing the tickets and ticket sales and raffle tickets. There's some exciting prizes, although we're really not supposed to say that just yet. Because, as you know, we're applying for a gaming license. But we really expect a wonderful turnout, and we're really hoping that, once the tickets are available, everybody will be interested in buying one. And I, of course, will bring tickets to the meeting, so people can buy them for me personally, if they'd like. That's November 6th, that's a Thursday night, so please mark your calendars. The second thing is, now is the time for us to start thinking about emergency winter shelter for the unhoused. We went through this last year. It turned into a real catastrophe. Luckily, the Share Center had the Kahunas to stand up to it and was able to create an emergency overnight shelter at the facility. But we'd really like to do it legitimately this year. So, we really need to pressure the Commission to figure out what the heck we need to do in order to get the Share Center certified as an emergency overnight shelter. The Haven of Rest does a fabulous job. In the In As Much House, they hire as many people as they can, even on these super cold nights. But the fact of the matter is, there are people who cannot and will not go to the Haven or to the In As Much House. So, we need an emergency overnight shelter, a low-barrier one. And I am imploring that the City Commission, please, look into this and figure out how to make this happen, because we really need this facility to be legitimized, to have full certification, or whatever the heck the codes require of us. So, please, Commissioners, I would like to ask you to look into that. And the third thing I wanted to mention is, two weeks ago, Ann Stadler stood up here and, amazing, the woman knows a bit about housing and housing construction, and she pointed out that there were some essentially ready neighborhoods for housing. And we are not taking advantage of that. There are lots of infill housings, but more importantly, there are huge, whole blocks that used to have houses that don't anymore. And this is over by the Post-Cereal, by the Kellogg Factory, et cetera. There's blocks and blocks of grassy, open, curved sidewalked areas with all the infrastructure ready for housing. Oh, shoot.
Sorry, Kathy.
That's all right.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, is there any Commission comment? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll let Commissioner Lacoste go first, if she'd like to, though.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I'm very appreciative that we did the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month. Anyone that is thinking about volunteering for that, it's excellent organization. I was a big sister for a while, and it's life-changing for a lot of these kids. So, I would strongly encourage the people to get involved with that organization.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say a couple of things. One, about the City Manager process, it was very tough. And again, thank everyone for doing that, putting their effort into it. I would do it again. It was a long haul, but it was well worth what we needed to accomplish. Upcoming event here in town also for fundraiser is, there's a Ducks for Diabetes coming up on September 20th. So, you've probably seen some ducks around town and people advertising for those. So, there'll be a duck race with little ducks and then a human duck race. So, if you feel the need to participate, please contact them. I did wanna end tonight with a little story about two brothers. They lived in a town. They lived in a town, and they thought that they had seen enough in their hometown and decided they wanted to move on. One of the brothers got up a little early, ahead of the other brother, and went down the road, and he ran into an old man down the road. He saw this town. He said to the old man, he says, "Tell me about this town. What kind of people live here?" The old man said to him, he goes, "I'm going to ask you the same question. Where did you come from?" He says, "Well, people in my town weren't kind of friendly. They were very harsh, not very good." The old man says, "Well, I think you're going to find the same people there." And so the first brother moved on. Just behind him comes a second brother. He sees the same old man sitting there just outside of town, says, "What do you think about the people that live in this town?" He goes, "Well, I'm going to ask you, where'd you come from?" And he replied, "The people were great, friendly, helpful." The old man replied back to him and says, "I think you'll find the same type of people in this town." The point is, isn't really where people who lives in these towns, it's the people that are around them. If you treat others with kindness and understanding, you'll get the same thing back. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any additional Commission comment? City manager, interim city manager, Ted Dearing?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of points of information that might be helpful to the commission, based on some of the comments we've heard this evening. The city did forgive some debt to NIBC a couple of months ago. That was $20,000, not $200,000. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lacoste?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to piggyback on that and remind everybody that Neighborhoods Inc. is a nonprofit organization, so.
Any additional comments? Seeing no further business to come before us, we are adjourned.